The first item is Affordable Housing Advisory Committee Recommendations. Jennifer Ferriero, Director of Housing and Community Development. Ms. Ferriero?
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners, City Administration, and members of the public. Again, Jennifer Ferriero, Director of Housing and Community Development. So this morning, it is my pleasure to share with you the recommendations of the city's Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. And we will be discussing a little bit about that committee and what their role was during this process. We'll also talk a little bit about the city's Local Housing Assistance Plan and review the incentives that were reviewed by the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. To give some background in terms of where we are, the city of West Palm Beach is a recipient of state dollars from Florida Housing Finance Corporation for the State Housing Initiatives Partnership Program. That's known as the SHIP funds. And these funds are, in essence, derived, they're known as the Sadowski Funds. And they are those funds that we have been trying to, I want to say, battle over the last few years or decades to just ensure that we're getting full funding from the Sadowski Funds. Just to give you a little bit of an overview in terms of what the city has received over the last four years, in fiscal year 1718, we've received about $466,000. In fiscal year 1819, it was about $147,000. In 1920, we received $194,000. And in fiscal year 2021, although we were expecting to receive full funding, COVID happened, unfortunately, and so we were depleted and we did not receive any funding to support these types of initiatives. And these funds are, in essence, utilized for the development or the preservation of affordable and workforce housing. And as a requirement of receiving those funds, we are statutorily required to assemble an Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. So I just want to add, whether we receive funding or not, this is a requirement that we have to kind of undertake and go through this process and just prepare for when we do receive funding in the forthcoming years. So the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee is required to consist of at least eight members, out of which six of them are, must have specific categories, or they have to represent a specific type of group. And we'll talk a little bit about that. The term of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee is in three years. And this board, this commission approved the city's AHAQ on October 19th, 2020. So in essence, we are required to have them, the AHAQ meets specific designation in terms of kind of their background and what role they represent in our community. So we are required to have an elected official of the city of West Palm Beach. We are required to have a citizen who resides within the jurisdiction. We are required to have a citizen who is in the banking or mortgage industry, a citizen who is an advocate of low-income housing or low-income persons in connection with affordable housing. We are required to have a for-profit developer for affordable housing, a not-for-profit developer for affordable housing, and a real estate professional with a connection to affordable housing. So as a result of those categories and kind of looking at just how many talented, dedicated citizens and residents we have in our city and individuals who are really focusing on the delivery of affordable housing, we were able to put together and make a recommendation for our AHAQ members. Of course, we have Teri Murray, who is our chair, and she represents Neighborhood Renaissance. Taya Sullivan, she is our co-chair from Valley National Bank. Our elected official, Commissioner Kelly Shof, District One. Andrew Velo Arias from Related Urban. Suzanne Cabrera from the Housing Leadership Council. Craig Glover from North End Rise. Alfonso Costa Jr. from Falcon Group. Jeremy Morris from Mental Health America. And Julian Cover from Cover Realty. And I just really want to thank our AHAQ members. Over the last couple of weeks, they've, a couple of months, I'm sorry, they have been meeting on various meetings, reviewing all of the incentives that we are required to review. And I really want to thank them for their time. It wasn't an easy task, and we met for several hours every day, so I just really want to thank them for their efforts. And of course, also Mark White from our team, who really led this on as well. And of course, Commissioner Shof.
Yes, of course, Commissioner.
Thank you for serving on this AHAQ advisory board. So what is the purpose of the board in their report? So in essence, the AHAQ, they are required to review specific strategies and specific incentives that are going to either increase the development of affordable housing or remove barriers to affordable housing. And so they were asked to review these specific incentives and provide recommendations for review by the city's governing body. Again, this is required by the Local Housing Assistance Plan, as required by the state of Florida, and we are submitted to submit this plan every three years, and we will start to review these incentives. So this is the report that was generated. Again, 12 incentives were approved by the AHAQ committee, and they were approved on February 10th, 2021. So the first incentive that the group was asked to overview or to discuss was a process for expedited permitting. So this process is to determine the process for approvals for orders or permits for affordable housing projects, and what ways the city can expedite these projects and move them forward. So under the current process, all building permit applications for affordable housing are processed under the expedited permitting review. So they are all expedited, and that specific expedited permitting fee is waived for affordable housing projects citywide. We also have an individual within our city that is designated to assist developers throughout the development process. So what we really want to have is an individual in our department where a developer can call in and say, "Well, I'm having some issues in this specific area. I'm unable to move, there's some roadblocks here. What can you do to help move this process forward?" Or if there's certain questions or certain things, they have an individual within the city that can really help guide them through that process. So we also have someone that is appointed within Housing and Community Development to assist in these efforts. So the AHAQ review committee, we reviewed these recommendations, and they want to continue to move forward with the existing process. However, they have some additional recommendations that they wanted us to consider. The first one is to provide written policies and procedures for how this process works so that developers have actual procedures that they can look at and for reference once they decide to move forward with these sorts of projects. They also want us to continue to educate developers about the current incentives that are available for affordable and workforce housing. They have asked us to discuss and put together a department meeting, a pre-application meeting, with the developers and with the different types of disciplines that are needed. So for example, there needs to be somebody from Housing and Community Development, someone from Engineering Services, someone from Public Works, just someone to sit down with them and kind of go through that process and have a pre-application meeting so that developers know exactly what it is that they need to bring to the table once they submit their permitting application. And then they have asked, also asked us to continue to work the different departments, Housing and Community Development, Development Services, and Engineering, just to continue collaborating on the current incentive that we have in place. The second incentive that was reviewed is the review of existing policies, I'm sorry, the review of an existing process in which we review before we adopt any policies, procedures, ordinances, or regulations that may potentially increase the cost of affordable housing. What currently happens is that in our ACM process, in our Agenda Cover Memorandum process, there is a section that indicates if that specific policy or agenda or item has anything to do with housing. If it does, and the individual clicks that it does, it is routed to Housing and Community Development. And so what we look at is, we look at the agenda item that's being brought to City Commission, and we make a determination, is this particular policy or procedure, is this going to increase the cost of affordable housing in any way? So we write that recommendation, and we provide that to you in the Agenda Cover Memorandum. Luckily, we haven't had a situation as of yet where it has, since I've been here, where we have had certain policies or procedural items that increased the cost of affordable housing, but that is the current process that we have, which has worked extremely well. I've received various requests from different departments. We take a look at it, and it's been extremely streamlined in terms of knowing what's coming on the pipeline.
Ms. Ferriero, before you move off of that slide...
Yes.
The, I guess it depends on how loosely you define increase the cost of housing. If we approve a project that is going to bring in, say, 600 new employees, theoretically, I mean, supply and demand, as we build as a city for increased demand for housing, by definition, that would increase it. So I assume that these mean direct impacts on the cost of housing as opposed to indirect?
That is correct.
Okay.
So it's more of a policy procedural. So for example, we were going to increase the cost of certain fees that had to do with development, obviously, that would increase the cost of affordable housing. So it's not necessarily projects per se, Mayor. It's more policies, fees, or, like you said, direct costs that may impact or increase that cost.
Okay.
So the AHAQ, we went through this process, and the AHAQ advises the city to move forward with implementing the current incentive. The next incentive is the preparation of printed or electronic inventory of locally-owned land that is suitable for affordable housing purposes. As you know, the Housing and Community Development Department, we also oversee all of the city's real estate transactions and the management of city-owned properties. And every couple, every year or so, we come forward to the City Commission, and we identify certain properties that are deemed for affordable housing purposes. And so what that, in essence, what, what we do is, we're required to do this as per statute. So when we bring it forward to you, we make a determination, these could be used for affordable housing purposes, these we may need to sell or surplus or move in a different direction, but this process is already in place. We've had numerous discussions over the last couple of months in terms of, you know, different properties that we brought forward, property that has been donated. So this current incentive is already in place. And we discussed this with the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, and they recommend for us to move forward with the current incentive and the procedures that are in place. I'm thinking now, Mayor, with your guidance and should you want us to move forward, that we'll come back and kind of discuss a little bit of, you know, kind of where we are with that and kind of go into a little bit more detail on what that process is in the near The next incentive that the AHAQ advisory board was asked to move forward with is the allowance of affordable accessory residential units in residential zoning districts. So currently, the city allows for accessory dwelling units in single-family districts and in live-work segments of mixed-use categories. The AHAQ committee moved, reviewed the existing recommendation, and they recommend for the city to continue implementing the current incentive. They also asked us to explore and to look into allowing for accessory dwelling units for affordable housing purposes citywide or for planning and zoning permits. And they have also asked us to look forward to low-interest construction loans for homeowners to be able to develop ADUs on their current sites. This is a process that will take a little bit of time to look at. We'll have to meet with planning, members of the community, and just to determine if that's something that we can do, if that's something that's permissible. But they have, the AHAQ board has asked us to move forward with exploring these potential Incentive number five was the allowance of flexibility in densities for affordable housing purposes. Currently, the city is working, as you know, Rick Green, last work session, he presented on an FAR incentive, floor-area ratio incentive, within the downtown master plan for projects for affordable and workforce housing. So we are continuing to work through that, and we plan to bring that to you in the forthcoming months. So the AHAQ advisory board has recommended for us to move forward with researching and finalizing the FAR incentive. They have also asked us to look at other FAR possibilities for other projects citywide, not just within the downtown master plan. They have also asked us to review additional density incentives to include alternative methods such as maximum dwelling units per acre, maybe also exploit that asset, and then to also look at the expansion of TDR programs citywide. Again, this is a pretty large undertaking. We'll have to work with the Planning Department, work with members of the community, and really narrow in on these specific incentives. That'll take a little bit of time for us to work with, but we will absolutely continue to do that at the request of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. The sixth incentive that we looked at is the allowance of affordable accessory residential units and residential zoning districts, the allowance of flexible lot configurations, including zero-lot line configurations for affordable housing. Currently, again, we have the downtown master plan allows for flexible design with regards to affordable housing by providing additional development capacity for projects that include affordable housing. And we have also began the permitting of micro-units with smaller residential units and square footage and fully functional kitchen and bathrooms. So as you know, there have been some projects that have been approved using the micro-unit, the ability to build micro-units within the city. So what the AHAQ committee recommended was to move forward with implementing the current incentive, and they have also asked us for, look at these incentives citywide and not just necessarily within the downtown master plan. Again, these are kind of big undertaking that we'll have to discuss with the Planning Department, and we'll have to further look into that in the event that you would want us to, if you would accept these incentives moving forward. Incentive number seven, we looked at the development near transportation hubs and major employment centers and mixed-use developments. Currently, the city's comprehensive plan land use element encourages affordable housing near transportation hubs by allowing more flexibility for reduced parking requirements. So currently, the AHAQ committee wants us to continue to implement the current incentive, and they have asked us to also consider non-traditional or alternative types of transportation hubs for development purposes. So again, we'll have to keep looking at some of these strategies with our Planning Department to look for specific areas where we can make amendments to the existing planning ordinances or the planning or the building capacities within that area. Incentive number eight is reservation of infrastructure capacity. And this is, asks us to review any infrastructure capacity or things that we can look at to reduce the cost for affordable housing projects. Currently, we waive the capacity charges for the water and wastewater for affordable housing, and that was approved in 2016 under Resolution 8316. And this incentive is eligible citywide for all affordable and workforce housing projects. The advisory board has asked us to continue to implement the existing incentive, but they also want us to look back and create a different methodology, perhaps doing a sliding scale that will help us better calculate what the waiver should be. And then we should have a limit in terms of what the maximum is that we can waive. So for example, currently, we're waiving the entire fee, and in some situations, it has caused our Public Utilities Department about $400,000, where we have waived $400,000 in capacity fees for some of these projects. And again, that's a fee that we need to charge just to make sure that we have the right capacity to support that project and to support this type of infrastructure citywide. So they have asked us to look at ways of, how do we have a sliding scale? And so we're not just waiving this fee that's required by our, that's required to be able to have the right capacity for water and for wastewater. So we want to look at that. We've been working with Poonam and her team members to further explore that, and we'll be bringing that to you for further consideration. Incentive number nine is a reduction of parking and setback requirements for affordable housing purposes. Currently, we have a 10% reduction in parking requirements when it's an affordable or workforce housing project. We also allow for a 50% reduction for elderly or special needs projects citywide. And we also encourage developers to utilize shared parking as required under Section 9.4 of the city's Court of Ordinances. The AHAQ recommendation, the AHAQ review board reviewed these recommendations, and they'd like for us to move forward with the current incentive. Modification of street requirements for affordable housing purposes, that was the 10th incentive that we looked at. Currently, the city of West Palm Beach, we've reduced the engineering fees associated with roadway closure by 25% for those who are developing affordable housing, and the AHAQ committee has asked us to move forward with implementing the current incentive. Incentive 11 is the modification of impact fee requirements, including the reduction or waiver of fees and alternative methods for fee payments for affordable housing purposes. Currently, as you know, the impact fees are associated with any developments that is charged actually by the county, so the city is not receiving those fees. However, we also reduced some of our internal fees. For example, the engineering construction fee is reduced by 25%. And then also, we have another fee that is reduced by 25% from 2.5 to 1.875. So the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee recommends for us to move forward with the current incentive. They have asked us also to set some budget or some funding aside from utilizing our housing trust fund so that we can subsidize some of these county impact fees for projects that are affordable or workforce housing. And they have asked us to also work with developers seeking funding to utilize the county's impact fee subsidy program. And that fund, that project or that program is subject to availability, but they should look at that prior to applying for the city's housing trust fund. Incentive number 12 discusses landbags, land trusts, and other types of incentives. So what they looked at is the creation of landbanks for communities to acquire land and maintain ownership of it permanently. They looked at the creation of land trusts as well in order to acquire land and maintain ownership of them permanently. And they've asked us to look at a residential, I'm sorry, a rental and rehabilitation subsidy program. So the AHAQ advisory board, again, asked us to explore establishing a landbank within our city and also establishing a land trust within our city, and to look at ways that we can establish a rental and rehabilitation subsidy program. Again, these are things that we'll have to really further explore at the, at your direction if that's something that you wanted to look forward to further reviewing and discussing.
What's the difference between a landbank and a land trust?
So the landbank gives you the capacity to landbank a property, and then the land trust is the funding that would allow to be able to support those needs.
Commissioner Lambert?
I just didn't understand. So when you say it allows us to landbank, can you just elaborate on that answer?
I'm sorry, I have something right here that's coming up. So when you landback a property, that means that what you can do with that specific property is that it will, the individual that ultimately ends up purchasing the property does not have to pay for the value of the land itself. So in allowing to do that, it would preserve or remove the cost of the land, so then the individual is only in essence paying for the actual structure itself. So it's to develop a methodology where we can do that citywide. So that's what they're asking for us to do. And then the land trust is so that we can have funding to support development for land banking purposes. So that's what they're asking us to further look at. We have a, countywide, there is a group that can do that. We haven't really done that in the city, not since I've been here. We'll have to really further explore that possibility, but it's kind of a one-step. Land banking and land trusts really allow individuals to afford homeownership and to be able to afford housing and to be able to build equity, but also sharing, having some cost sharing with the actual land trust and the land banking method. So again, it just makes the project more feasible and the housing more feasible for the end user.
Yeah, follow-up?
So is that more on a single-family home?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's more for single-family. There have been some scenarios where it's been in multifamily, but it's mostly for single-family.
Right.
Okay. And that was it. So before I move forward on next steps, I just kind of want to talk about this report. So the report that, this report in essence, the AHAQ, as you know, they reviewed numerous incentives. And a lot of the incentives, they're just recommending us for us to move forward with looking at other strategies and things that we haven't looked at before. So the approving of the report in itself will come back to you in the forthcoming months. So we'll have the affordable housing, I'm sorry, the Local Housing Assistance Plan is due to the state on May 2nd. So before we submit that report, it'll have to come to you for approval, but it'll also bring in some of these recommendations. Should you accept these recommendations, that will really be your guiding or your green light to us to start working on implementing some of these incentives. So again, we'll have to work with Planning Department, we'll have to work with our city attorney's office, we'll have to work with members of the community to determine if some of these incentives are the ones that we want to move forward with and what is the best way to do that. And again, there's numerous of incentives that we'll have to take a look at. So again, we plan on coming back to you sometime in April to accept and review these recommendations. I will be sending you a copy of this final report, and it has further details on some of the things that we discussed today, and we'll come back to you for approval. And that is actually, Fay, as you wanted us to allude to, that is a direction that we're asking from you is to review these specific recommendations in the report and then coming back to you in the next couple of weeks to determine if you'd like to move forward with these recommendations. And that concludes my presentation. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Very good. Thank you for a very thorough presentation. Board members, any questions? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. That was a fantastic presentation. I have a few questions. I guess my first one, I wanted to ask you about the transportation hubs. You mentioned that they might be wanting to look at non-traditional hubs, and I'm just wondering, I know that in our city, there are specific areas that you are probably referring to where we have transportation, where we have trains, where we have trolleys and maybe bus stops. And I wonder, then, some of the other items, like land banking and land trust sort of referred to citywide. So I was just wondering how the two kind of work together, that, you know, are we trying to, I guess, open up the areas where we are able to have more affordable and workforce housing and then looking at additional transportation methods? Or is that something that maybe would be for another group to talk about? I'm just curious, because obviously, not everybody has a car, and it's great to be able to walk to transportation, so I know that that's not available citywide.
So these incentives, again, some of them will be citywide because it really depends on what we're looking at. And as it relates to the transportation hubs, that's really more targeted, again, in locations where there is more opportunities for, you know, transit hubs. So for example, if we wanted to look at locations near, if there was another Brightline station, or if we wanted to look at a location near the Mangania, what's that, the Tri-Rail station, and there was other opportunities for development near those areas, we'll look to incentivize development within those areas. So that's more strategic in terms of transportation hubs and where they're currently available. And the other methods, some of them, again, will be citywide if they want us to look at accessory dwelling units. Maybe there's a way to look at that outside of just these specific boundaries that they're currently at. So it really just depends on what specific strategy we're looking at. But yes, this would be more towards where are our existing transportation hubs and how can we incentivize development within those specific areas.
Follow-up, Commissioner? You said you had several questions. Yep? Oh, okay, that's fine. Commissioner Peruzzi?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. Prior to being up here, I was a two-term member of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, and I see that some of the issues that they're still discussing are things that we discussed. However, I see that we have implemented some of the things, it's just they're calling for maybe tweaking some of those incentives. Particularly with regard to the expedited permitting, I remember we had long discussions when I was on it about how we make sure that things don't fall through the cracks and to make sure that those permits do actually get expedited. And we had suggested, you know, doing some sort of a stamp that says expedited or affordable housing project or something, just so that through the process, there were no snags, it wouldn't get held up. And I don't want to get too much into the weeds, but I was just wondering, is there some process for identifying these projects?
We do have a stamp. So now I know that it's you, Commissioner. We have a couple of those in our office. But yes, currently, we have a stamp, and then every time a developer submits an application, there's a manual process, just, so there is that stamp. And then we will also send an email to the Planning Department and to the Construction Department, Construction Services, and let them know, this particular project, here is the permit number, just to reiterate, it's an affordable housing project. So there is a person within our department that follows up on all of these projects to make sure that they're being expedited. With that said, we're trying to move away from a manual process. So once the new system is implemented, that Rick is currently working on, those will be flagged. So anytime an affordable housing project comes in, it'll be flagged, and so the different disciplines will know that it is expedited. But, you know, currently, since that's not currently in place, we do have a designated person that really follows up, that the developer can contact and say, "We submitted this, there's, you know, is it falling through the cracks? Where are we with it?" So there's that follow-up that's conducted within our department.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you for the very thorough presentation, and thank you to Commissioner Shof and the committee for their review of these incentives. It's great to see the feedback on them and the tweaking and some new ideas come forward. My question relates to a, I'm curious if, as a city, if we have a plan on where we'd like to see some of these affordable housing projects take place so that it's not all condensed into one area, but that we're looking at the city as a whole? And I certainly understand that some of that has to do with where developers are able to, you know, find property to do this, but I'm curious if we have a strategic plan as well?
So that's, one of the ways that we're doing that is through the new FAR incentive for the downtown. So what Rick Green and his group presented last week will help with that. We looked at, we wanted to make sure that we have additional affordable and workforce housing within our downtown. It is one of our most high-cost, you know, areas within our city. And if a developer wanted to buy out, out of that requirement for their And if a developer wanted to buy out of that requirement for their specific project, they can't, they can only buy out within the downtown area because we don't want them to say, okay, well, let's move, let's produce this in the north end or let's produce this elsewhere where housing is already slightly more affordable than within our downtown. So that's one strategy that we're looking to do that. Of course, we'll have to look at, you know, outside of downtown, which is one of the recommendations of the AHAQ Board, to look at these sorts of incentives outside of the downtown, but that's one strategy in which we're doing that.
Follow-up.
Yes, thank you. And I think that that's important because I want to make sure that we're paying attention to, you know, some of the downsides of gentrification and that we're looking at ways that we can make sure that people aren't spending a disproportionate amount of their income on housing. And one of the incentives, the landtrust, I think, you know, it seems like that goes towards that because that was for single-family home ownership as well as these multifamily units that you've been discussing. And so I don't know if there's other incentives that lead to that, but that would be something that'd be very important to me.
Absolutely. And I'll say, these incentives are very prescribed, so these are the things that we have to review as per Florida statute. It doesn't mean that there is not a variety of other things that we're currently implementing or other programs. The Advisory Board also looked, wants us to continue to meet and look at other things that we can do to support affordable housing purposes, programs, initiatives. Again, this was very prescribed just to adhere to what the state's requirements are, but there are other things that we'll be looking at in the forthcoming, in the forthcoming months.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Paduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. I remember when I was on it that it was a very brief prescribed period of time that the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee was actually in session or available to do things. It was like a couple-month, three-month period of time, and then it ceased to exist and they had to reappoint it the next time, you know, around. Is the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee still operating that way?
No, the requirements have changed for it, so they have to be active for three years. And every year, we have to go back and give them an overview of the incentives, how they're working out, what progress we've made, where we are with our projects. So that has changed under the current state laws.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. I had a question about the rental and rehab subsidy program. It seemed like most of these incentives, I guess, pertain to new projects, so I wasn't sure, I was just wondering if you could talk a little bit about that, if that was sort of a subsidy for maybe a structure that's already existing or, and have we identified any of those?
I think what they were looking at is a rental subsidy program where we can assist individuals with, or current landlords with rehabilitation to their rental structures. That's one thing that they wanted us to look at because we have a lot of substandard housing within our city. And then in essence, we could turn those properties and make sure that those properties don't rent their units for, over a specific rate. They were also looking at a rehabilitation subsidy program, which is a program that we already have, which is a rental, I'm sorry, which is a rehab program for those who meet specific income criterias and then need extensive repairs to their housing. So we have one of those programs already, now given, because of the shortage of funds that we received from the state, we haven't really received anything. We don't have the funding to actually fund the program itself, but we have an infrastructure in place where we provide those kinds of services to residents in our city.
Board members, any other questions? Commissioner Lambert.
Mayor, just a comment to say thank you so much for making this a priority and doing such a thorough job on this. I think that this is one of the top issues plaguing our city and one of the ones that I'm appreciative that we're thinking about strategically, so thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Okay, thank you again, Ms. Freo.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners.
Mayor, if I could, I thought you saw my light here.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
I would like to just add a couple of comments and observations to the record here as part of this discussion. You know, putting on my former hat as the Director of Housing and Community Development and having been involved in preparing the five-year, three-year housing assistant plan throughout my career, just a couple of things that kind of jumped out at me, and I'm glad to see that we're allowing for some time between this work session and the April 19th work session with some of the recommendations, you know, as we sit here with staff that we need to vet through more carefully from my perspective. You know, when we look at the exploration of a construction loan for accessory dwelling units, I think that begs the question whether it is appropriate for city staff to get involved with setting up construction loans for private residency and then setting that precedent and what it does to our workload. A couple of other of the recommendations that I want us to look further at, vetting through, relates to the establishment of a land bank and a landtrust. Those particular types of initiatives, I think, just from experience are better suited for the nonprofit or public sector to be engaged in. We already have a, probably, I think they are countywide, the Community Land Trust, and that's their area of expertise. And I don't think that we should compete with them in looking at trying to establish that in the amount of work that is involved with a municipality setting up a landtrust or a landbank. And I think a number of the programs that we have, particularly on the real estate management side, dovetails very well with this. So if we're looking at landbanking wherein you write down the value of the purchase of the land so that the overall construction of the house is more affordable, that's a policy change that we can look at as opposed to setting up a whole other entity of landbanking. And the other component that we have to look at when we're looking at from a workload standpoint, and we just had some of this discussion here, looking at what these additional initiatives outside of a municipality would do on your current workload as we take on new initiatives, looking at that we're in, we're in a scale-back mode in terms of staff. So to put recommendations on the books that get adopted that we are not going to be able to effectively manage, whether it's through HCD or Development Services, that's something as the city administrator, you know, I'm going to be taking a very, very close look. And let me just state, affordable housing is near and dear to me. That's where I cut my teeth on my career. However, we got to balance what is appropriate for us to take on, what is appropriate to leave for the nonprofit sector, what is appropriate for the private sector, how can we partnership and still meet all of the other priorities that we have to carry out.
All right, Ms. Johnson, thank you for those comments. Can I have you get with Ms. Freo and the Advisory Committee and sort through those so that when it comes back to us on April 19th, it's been fully vetted?
Yes, sir.
So what we get on the 19th is something that has been vetted at both the staff level and at the Advisory Committee level? Please. Is that a yes? Ms. Johnson?
I said, yes, sir. I'm sorry.
All right.
Mayor, may I add briefly before we, and Fay, I agree with everything you stated. A lot of the things that we're looking at are very burdensome in terms of workload, and yes, a lot of them, we should not be taking on, but we should work with other nonprofits or organizations that can do this. But this report is just a recommendation that they have in terms of asking us to further explore these methods. If these methods don't work or we're not able to move forward with them at the appropriate time, or this is the rationale as to why, I think the AHAQ would be open to that understanding. And, but I just want to add that this is not a requirement that we have to implement this specific incentive, it's just that we will further explore it. But I 100% agree with you, Fay, in terms of your comments and the things that you stated.
Understood, and I didn't want to be remiss as the city administrator and former Housing Community Development Director to not put comments in the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Fay.
All right. I believe the record is complete. Any other questions from Commissioners? Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you again.